City Council Meeting of September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five is called to order at six oh-three P M. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Commissioner Laura.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lutz.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Dr. Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice President Camacho.
Here.
Mayor Chairman, Mayor President Garcia.
Here.
All present.
We're gonna have the invocation led by Councilmember Eric Lutz, and we'll have the flag salute by Girl Scout Troop fourteen thirty-two. And when fourteen thirty-two is gonna do the pledge, we'll have him come up here and I'll present you with the microphone. If we can all kindly bow our heads. God, we come to you today asking guidance, wisdom, support in this. Help us engage in discussion, allow us to grow closer. Bonds. Fill us with your grace for God as we make that affect the community positively, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit and truth of the greater glory of you and the service of humanity. May we ask these things in your name, amen. Thank you, Councilmember. Fourteen thirty-two, if you could please come up here.
With our Girl Scout Troop one-four-three-two, together we will lead the pledge of allegiance. Together we will lead the pledge of allegiance. Please stand, place the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and join us as we begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good job. If you could just stay right there for a minute. I do wanna give a little background on Girl Scout Troop fourteen thirty-two. They were formed here in September twenty-twenty-two by Pico Rivera residents. They started off at daisies. They've grown into second-year brownies and first-year juniors, bright, energetic, third and fourth graders. Let's give them another round of applause. They've been very active in our community, dealing with food drives, holiday donations, and many other service projects. But you may have seen them during cookie season out by Walmart in the community doing their service. So let's give them the big round of applause and thank you for leading us on the pledge of allegiance. On behalf of the City of Pico Rivera, my colleagues here on the City Council, we want to present Girl Scouts Troop fourteen thirty-two. Thank you for your service and contributions here to the City of Pico Rivera. Let's give them another round of applause. You want them to stand by themselves? Leaders of the troops, they can take a photo right here. Do you wanna come up and take a picture? Yes, please.
We just... Hello?
Yes.
We just wanna thank the City Council for giving us the opportunity to earn our Inside the Government and celebrating our community badge. The girls today will be learning the process that the city takes to help make their communities better and how they can be involved in being part of that as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. You know what? I need to recognize some of our commissioners in attendance. We have Planning Commissioner Estra Saliz and Veteran Commissioner Gil Perez. Thank you for your service, thank you for everything you do here in the City of Pico Rivera. I also wanna recognize John Contreras, President of Rancho Unified School. Or thank you, John, for joining us this evening. And before I get into the next presentation, you may see there's right here, I have a colleague who just turned forty-three, Gustavo Camacho, happy birthday, sir.
Twenty-three, that's right, twenty-three.
And you could let everybody know that one. All right, moving along. We're, uh, we have the Women's Club. And today, it's a great honor to recognize one of the oldest clubs in California, nineteen-twelve. And these, this remarkable club does so much in the community. You see them out there at many of our events and activities. And do we, where's the Women's Club? Do I see? I don't... You know what? I'd just say we should postpone it for the next meeting. Yes. Yeah, no, this, this, uh, we really need to highlight their accomplishments and what they've done here in the community. Yeah, so we'll, we'll just move it to the next one. Okay? Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, and then Jacque, he wasn't able to make it. He, he got injured and ill, so we'll have to come back with the Women's Club and with Jacque as well. So moving along, let's move into public comments. I have, um, first off, we have Douglas Hall with Kiwanis. Oh, okay. That's right.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having us here today. I represent the local Kiwanis Clubs in the area. I'm from Downey. I have with me fellow Kiwanians, Tony and Evelyn Aguilar, also from our Downey Club. For those of you that are not familiar with Kiwanis, we are a community nonprofit service organization. We do lots of community events, and our primary focus is on youth. It's on children. And we're in the process, and have been in the process, of working on building a club here in Pico Rivera. We have quite a few people that already have signed up with lots of interest. We're getting close to where we hope we can get people committed to actually write that check to pay some dues and join the club. And I would like to invite all of you to come and be a part of Kiwanis. One of the big driving features of Kiwanis here in Pico Rivera is we sponsor what is called Key Club, which is a high school service organization, which is the high school version of Kiwanis. And the kids learn about leadership, they learn about clubs and organization, they learn about service. And we think it's so important for them to learn about service. If they learn service and get accustomed to service at a young age, as they become adults, they'll continue with that service. And that's what we're all looking for, I think, is have servant people in our communities. So we have an information meeting, pardon me, at El Rancho High School, which we will be holding tomorrow evening in the library. It's at six, uh, is it six-thirty? I've got flyer right in front of me, I'm sorry. Six o'clock. So at six o'clock, El Rancho High School in the library, I would invite you all to come to learn about Kiwanis and learn about what we do with the kids and all the things that we do. It's amazing what these high schoolers do. Across the country, they all participate in pediatric trauma prevention programs, and they all raise funds. Last year, collectively, they raised five hundred thousand dollars toward pediatric prevention. That's what the kind of work that these high school kids are doing. But they need your support. And currently, the El Rancho High School Key Club does not have a club to support them. Downey has stepped up and we're, we're helping them at the moment, but they need to have their own Kiwanis club supporting them. So again, very important that we get a club going here in Pico. Years ago, there was a club in Pico, and we'd like for it to, to come back. Along with the high school, we also support middle school service clubs, and we support elementary school service clubs. So we're the only service organization in the world that has youth organization service clubs that we support in that manner. So again, I would invite you all to come to El Rancho High School tomorrow. It's an information meeting, learn about Kiwanis, learn about what the Key Club is doing. I have flyers, there's some flyers over on the table. Thank you very much for your time.
Lorraine Delau, who's gonna speak on her nonprofit organization, Avanzar? With Ernest? Ernest will go first? Okay, Ernest, please. Ernest Escare.
Good evening, thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about an organization, nonprofit, that's works with students and veterans, and their impact is incredible. They're named Avanzar. For three years, we've been feeding students and veterans that attend East LA Community College. Many of the students come here from Pico Rivera as well as the surrounding communities. Uh, you gotta excuse me. You know, going to school despite their hardships and stuff, they still strive to reach their goals and try to fix their current situation, make it best as possible. We feed, with, working with the East LA College Basic Needs Program, we feed about six hundred kids by week, by month, like twice a month. And this is stuff that we've done for three years now. And what we're asking is for city leaders, the city residents, to join us and support these kids. We're having a fundraiser, a big fundraiser, November eighth. It's gonna be at Plaza de la Raza in Lincoln Heights, and we're having La Verdad, Balance, and Theatre Legacy as performers. We're hoping you will support and maybe buy a ticket, maybe buy a table for ten, and just support events, a really good cause. It's amazing the reaction, the interaction we get with the students and the veterans. They're very grateful. My father's a veteran. It's just a really heartwarming thing. We're asking for everybody's support, these kids from Pico Rivera and everywhere else that need our help. And things are just getting worse as time goes on, you know, especially with cuts and all that. So we're here today to ask for your support. I have flyers, I think, which you may have gotten them. Thank you, and thank you. And hopefully, you'll be able to support it or asking for your support, attend, do what you could do. We have Falconazo, La Moscato, and even host two seventy-two in Montebello that are behind us and support us. So anything you can do, we'd be very grateful and appreciate it. And I'll let Lorraine come up and mention it.
Thank you, Ernest. Lorraine Delau.
Mayor, council members, it gives me such great pleasure to be home, if I can say home, being that I was a resident for forty-five years. So I, I want to piggyback on Ernie's dialogue about Avanzar. I joined the committee a couple of years ago, and it's overwhelming. It leaves you overwhelming when you see the students. We provide in the, uh, two breakfasts a month. So we, when I first started, we were feeding, uh, giving breakfast to the students, such as nourishment, bananas, oatmeal. La Moscota Bakery donates per month eight hundred conchas a month. So when I first joined, we were feeding about three hundred and fifty students. Now the students are up to like five hundred and fifty, based on the economy, based on their personal needs. And it's really heartbreaking that they're trying to study and continue their curriculum to graduate out of East LA College. And sometimes they're just so hungry. The, the students come in the morning and they're just, they're just ravishing. They're, they want something to eat, and, and then they say, well, how long are you gonna be here? Oh, we'll be here until noon. Okay, we'll be back. You know, we give, we try to give them their protein and dairy and, um, and send them off their way, that way they can, they can study in the classroom. But moreover, is that as the economy here in, shall I say, community, nation, is growing worse? We're, we're, I think this semester, we're gonna acquire more students, which is gonna, we're gonna need just help. And I wanted to come first here because to me, Pico Rivera is my home. So I wanted to come here first and, and, um, and just invite you to our, our fundraiser. We're planning a really nice, a really nice event. So we're inviting, um, uh, our food vendors, as well as artwork. We're artists that will be there in attendance, as well as food to, for the dance. It's really moving, the, the way the students are trying at, at East LA College. So anyway, we need the support from community leaders and the community itself to help nourish the students. We have future goals such as scholarships. We wanna mentor them and, uh, and, and see what their goals are, the students. This summer, we had Escalante. They, they took care of some of the students there at East LA College, provided a, a summer class for them, for the students. So it was, it's very engaging. So I hope we get to see you and have a good time, and the staff and community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me your time.
Lauren Talbot.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Lauren Talbot, and I'm the Community Library Manager at the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library. Here are our updates for October. Families are invited to celebrate Star Wars Reads Month at the Pico Rivera Library on Tuesday, October fourteenth at four P M. We'll have Star Wars-themed art activities, trivia, and giveaways. We have two great teen programs for Filipino-American Heritage Month at the Pico Rivera Library in October. On Wednesday, October first at four P M, teens will learn about Filipino-American artist Pasita Abad, and they will create their own abstract media paintings inspired by her work. On Wednesday, October fifteenth at four P M, we are gonna have a book discussion about Randy Ribéz's novel, Everything We Never Had. Copies of the book are available at the library, and teens can keep the book. The Rivera Library will be closed on Monday, October thirteenth for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next speaker, we have Saul Ochoa. Saul Ochoa. Alrighty. I'll move, I have one written comment. And this is from John Morrison regarding noise and violence. City Manager, can you look into this written comment, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments. Agencies on tonight's agenda, we have our City Council and Water Authority. I have items one through eight. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Sanchez, moved, so I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lutz, any discussion? There be none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Commissioner Laura.
Yes.
Councilmember Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Councilmember Commissioner Dr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice President Camacho.
Yes.
Mayor President Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. City Manager report.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. I do have a couple of updates. One is from Victor Farrar from Office of Sustainability. He's here to give a quick update on compliance with S B thirteen eighty-three. As you know, this is a state mandate law. The City of Pico Rivera took this very serious early on, and our results will reflect that. Victor, just to give a quick update on that.
Victor, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Like Steve mentioned, our City Manager, I'm gonna provide a brief update on S B thirteen eighty-three compliance. We go to the next slide, please. We're gonna cover four areas, an overview of S B thirteen eighty-three and how it applies to the city, June twenty-twenty-five's waste diversion performance, challenges and actions that the city's facing, and future initiatives to help address S B thirteen eighty-three compliance mandates. Next slide, please. As far as an overview, the city currently has a franchise agreement with NASA Services, where the city oversees a contract. The NASA provides organics, recycling, construction and demolition debris, e-waste, entire collection, services for residential, commercial, and industrial sectors. S B thirteen eighty-three, which is the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, was adopted in two thousand and sixteen and has had several milestones with different forms of requirements, starting with education, followed by a requiring cities to provide an organic waste collection services, and then followed by an enforcement component. And S B thirteen eighty-three mandates or requires cities, all jurisdictions, to, um, to reach the, the following targets, seventy-five percent organic waste reduction by twenty-twenty-five, twenty percent food recovery by twenty-twenty-five, and certain procurement targets where the city or cities are required to purchase materials derived from organic waste, such as mulch, compost, or energy deriving from anaerobic sites. Failure to, to reach these targets carry a penalty of seven thousand five hundred, all the way up to ten thousand dollars per day per occurrence, which is a pretty hefty fine. So our goal here in, in the Office of Sustainability and the city is to, one, continue further environmental stewardship and also avoid these state penalties. Next slide, please. And as far as the June twenty-twenty-five waste diversion performance, the city collected five thousand two hundred and twelve tons that month, which is equivalent to about seven hundred and seventy adult elephants, which is a lot for, for one month, and diverted thirty-four percent. While that percentage may seem rather small, it's actually, uh, we've been, we received good feedback from our waste hauler and Cal Recycle that we are one of the better performing cities in the region and in the state. We are also seeing a positive trend in terms of waste diversion. For example, in May of twenty-twenty-five, we had a thirty-two percent diversion of, of waste. To June twenty-twenty-five, thirty-four percent diversion. So we're, we're doing very well. Next slide, please. In terms of key challenges and actions, we have, we are facing some challenges with our food recovery component compliance, and that really is due to the city not really having any local food banks that are certified by the state. While there are churches that provide food distribution, there's a, a component that requires them to report back to the state, and some, it becomes, uh, you know, labor intensive to do that reporting. So some organizations do not wish to do that. The second is community complying gaps with S B thirteen eighty-three. As you can imagine, asking if households and businesses to change their behavior and start separating waste, isn't it, you know, undertaking itself a lot of education? And so we're still working on, on, on those items. For example, we currently entered into a partnership with a nonprofit community-based organization called Food Cycle L A. This is their, their niche, and you could, you, you can expect to see them in the next couple of months out there in the community, talking to businesses, connecting them to local food banks, to, one, help us comply, but also provide food to, to those that are in need of that, that food. We're also issuing warning notices for S B thirteen eighty-three noncompliance to residents and businesses. And this is a, you know, notice that just lets them know that they're not complying, the reasons they're not complying, and how they can address those issues to avoid any penalties. We're also hosting quarterly residential composting and commercial compliance workshops. This is a, we have two pictures up there showing our, our latest composting workshop, a very, very successful program, community's asking for, for more of these, and we're just happy to continue informing the community and getting participation. And then finally, digital outreach to improve public participation. So we're constantly promoting our S B thirteen eighty-three organic practices, organic waste separation practices on social media. We're gonna release a video soon covering S B thirteen eighty-three, why it's important and how to comply. Next slide, please. And then some of the, some of the things that we're looking into the near future is continuing a partnership with schools to engage youth. We believe that engaging the youth will, the long term, will help change that type of behavior and promote waste diversion, organic waste separation. Continue collaboration with resident businesses and nonprofit. I wanna make sure that they know that we are a resource to them, and we're happy to help answer any questions they may have or assist them in setting up the right measures. or assist them in setting up the right measures to separate waste. And finally, continue building a healthier and sustainable Pico Rivera. Next slide. Thank you.
Any questions, comments at this time from my colleagues? Councilmember Lutz?
Well, I just want to applaud the Office of Sustainability. After two or three months, already 33% to 34% diversion, organic waste is, you know, it's a feat on its own. But to see the results there, proud. Thank you for all your hard effort and your entire team and your offices.
Dr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you for this effort. And my question is just regarding the buckets for organic waste that were given out. They're little, looks like almost lunch containers. If, I know they were giving them out, you all were giving them out at community events. Are there any more available if residents weren't able to pick them up at those events? Can they still, do we have any more? And where do they go to pick up those containers?
Yes, absolutely, Councilmember Dr. Sanchez. So what Dr. Sanchez is referring to, or Councilmember Dr. Sanchez is referring to, is the kitchen pails. These are small buckets that are used in kitchens to separate your food waste rather than going to trash. Put them into those little buckets, separate them, and it helps comply. But also, you could use it to create your own compost in your backyard. We have a lot of them available. We welcome the community to stop by for some. And I know they've been, they've been hidden in our public events. So if you visit us at City Hall, any time we're open, Monday through Thursday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., we'll be happy to handle that. Thank you.
Victor, thank you for all you do as well. You're doing a great job. Any other comments? Okay, city manager.
Yes, Mayor. One good announcement, Elvy, if you want to talk a little bit about us being a finalist.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Department of Community and Economic Development is thrilled to be recognized at the 30th Annual Eddie Awards by the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. We are a finalist among the small cities. And some of you may know, LAEDC works to reimagine the regional economy, growing equitable, sustainable, and resilient. It provides a healthy and high standard for all those in the county. We are finalists among cities like Azusa, Glendora, Montebello, Gardena, and the City of San Fernando. The honor reflects the outstanding work of all 88 cities across Los Angeles County who are doing their best to support residents and businesses. An independent blue ribbon committee selected our city after a thorough review of all the applicants. We look forward to get our first Eddie Award in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go into good order, A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4.
I have no significant comments. I just want to wish my colleague a happy birthday.
Councilmember Lutz?
Items for A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4, I attended the Independent Cities Reorganization of the Board, and that was this past week. I also attended a couple of fun events, being that we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. I have two events that I participated in. And of course, here in our wonderful city of Pico Rivera, we had our very first Hola Mexico Film Festival outside of Mexico. And we were very honored. And I, my understanding is we're going to have a second film festival in 2026. Bringing the arts and culture into the community is very important to make a city vibrant, make a city business-friendly, and, and also to be sustainably responsible. So we're all in the up and up here in Pico Rivera. You all should be proud of your community. So that was a great festival there that we had at the Sinoplis in the north part of town. And I was privileged to participate in the East LA Mexican Independence Parade that was held in East LA along Cesar Chavez. And it was a nice crowd. Everybody was celebrating independence, Mexican independence on that past weekend. And of course, in our neighboring town of Whittier, I also attended the very first annual film festival that they had up there in Uptown Whittier. So I was privileged to be amongst our wonderful Senator Bob Archuleta. He was one of the speakers and panelists there, as well as Joe Vina Terry, the mayor of Whittier. And so those were the events that I attended, and that concludes my, my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lutz. Councilmember Dr. Sanchez.
Thank you. I wanted to report for A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4. I was also able to attend the Hola Mexico Film Festival and watch a film with, with our residents. And actually, there was no seat available in the theater at the Sinoplis. It was called Mesa de Regalos. And I think it was a great opportunity. We had a red carpet, we had popcorn. And to my wonderful benefit, it was, the film was in Spanish. We also had a meet and greet and a question and answer session after the movie with the director. He is from Mexico, but he was able to study film in Georgia. And so just asking him questions about the film, and they had English subtitles. So do not fear for individuals like myself that, English was my first language, and I did learn Spanish. Not the greatest, but it's a benefit for practicing my Spanish, an opportunity. I was happy to do that. But I also enjoyed getting to know the director. And I think bringing these types of projects to Pico Rivera really brings the industry and highlights what we have, and also encourages other, not only actors to be in films, but to be behind the screen, like the camera crews, lighting, directors and writers. And the director that, that wrote the film, he was really impressive. And just talking about his path to that career, I think, was a benefit. And I look forward to hosting other events here in Pico Rivera. We'd love to have any, any of the arts. I think it's really important to have that in Pico Rivera. And lastly, I attended a Rio Hondo Golf Tournament fundraiser for the Rio Hondo College Foundation with my colleagues. Unfortunately, we were not the first place team. But it was wonderful to be able to go out and support. The event supports scholarships for Rio Hondo College students, which is my alma mater. I'm a board member on that foundation, and I'm also a representative on the, they're hiring a new president, superintendent of their district. So I represent and will be on that panel to help select the new president. So that's it for my, my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Mayor Pro Tem Camacho?
Nothing to report, Mayor, other than to stay after so we can break the gaitas.
Okay. Mine is, mine is fairly brief. In terms of A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4, I did attend the LA County Sanitation Meeting. I just, I want to echo some comments from our sports organizations and from some business, community leaders, acknowledging our Sheriff's Department and our Southwest Patrol for the good work that you guys are doing out in our parks, in our business community. So if you can just please convey that to the rest of the team. And that concludes my report. Moving along, we'll adjourn, but if I may just adjourn in memory of two individuals. One is Carmen Zuniga, who was a longtime resident, raised many, many children here in the community. They went to the local schools, El Rancho, and some of them went on to be law enforcement officials to this day. And the other is Margot Jimenez, who was, who worked here in the City of Pico Rivera as an executive, maybe a secretary for over two decades under the Cordamarche administration. So we'll just adjourn in their honor, if we may. And we'll adjourn at 6:43 p.m. Thank you.